We'll go ahead and still have about four minutes, but.
Just what I got is four minutes.
Yeah, and just checking trying to get ahead of the game.
Did Tim get on line yet?
Yeah, Tim, Tim, yeah, Tim's on on the call. I have someone in on the call SCCS. Yep, no problem. I just didn't know if you were gonna plan on making comments or not.
Yeah, I was just at the end. Yeah, I just wanted to let everybody know kind of what's new with South County.
Okay, all right, so.
That'll be under public official time?
I was just gonna say, are you talking about South County's paper or?
No, I'm sorry, South County Community Services.
Okay, all right, no problem.
Would we put that under government officials or public officials, Jim?
We 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 can, if you want to include that in the agenda, we go Mr. Grissler and then his guest. And then South County Community Services, therefore wouldn't have to sit through the whole meeting.
Sounds good.
Okay. Sir, can I, and I apologize, but can we get your name and then I'll make sure that that's.
Yeah, Drew Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. We do have all seven council members trustees on the call and we've been recording the calls since there was a quorum, so.
Okay.
Jim?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you and I'll hit the, I'll send you to start the video, Gail.
I wasn't sure if I was. There we go.
All right. Got a, just maybe a minute.
What I got, I got six fifty-nine on my computer clock here. When it turns seven, we'll go, we're within less than a minute.
All right.
About thirty-five seconds.
All right, give me a second here.
If you just get the flag up, we'll be ready to get the show rolling. You can do it. Okay, I show seven o'clock on my watch right now, so I'd like to call the meeting to order for the Vicksburg Village Council for October fifth. We'll start by doing a pledge of allegiance. If you all join me, I pledge allegiance to the flag. Okay, we'll take a moment of silence and then our clerk village manager Jim Mallory will do roll call.
Okay, catch up here a second. Apologize. Mr. Frisbee.
Here.
Trustee Bailey.
Here.
Trustee Keller.
Here.
Trustee Merrill.
Here.
Trustee Reaster.
Here.
Trustee Holmes.
Here.
President Adams.
Here.
We have agenda for tonight's meeting in front of you. Are there any additions or corrections?
We do have one agenda item to add under public official appearances, Mr. Adams.
Please.
From South County Community Services, Mr. Drew Johnson would like to provide the council and citizens with an update. And he would speak after Mr. Grissler. And Mr. Grissler has guests that he would like to introduce as well, under agenda item number seven.
Okay. With that, I'd entertain a motion with those changes to approve the agenda that's been submitted. Is there a motion?
I move that the approval of the agenda is corrected.
We have trustee Reaster with the motion.
And there's support by Rick Holmes, I believe I heard.
Yes, support.
Support by Mr. Holmes.
Okay.
A roll call vote will be trustee Frisbee.
Yes.
Trustee Bailey.
Yes.
Trustee Keller.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
Trustee Reaster.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
President Adams.
Yes. Okay, with that, we have no scheduled appearances, but we do have, as Jim's pointed out to us, a number of public officials. And we're going to start with John Gissler. John, do you want to address the council?
Thank you, Bill. I appreciate it. I am here only for one purpose, and that is to introduce to the Vicksburg community Mona Lisa Watson. Our candidate, one of the candidates for county clerk. And I won't say anything about her because she can explain her background and everything. I just want to say that she has the right demeanor, the right attitude to continue in the footsteps of Tim Snow, who was so non-political in this job. And the job really requires somebody that's not going to make it a partisan issue. So I I support Mona Lisa one hundred percent, and I encourage her to take over the rest of the time I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening. Can you all hear me? Okay?
And see you.
I was wondering if the meeting host could let me in. I have, I'm holding my phone, but I really want to get on my Chromebook.
Um, and that would be me, and I won't count this time against my skill set. What I hit the only thing from you that was requesting an entry.
Okay.
So I, let me stop the share a second.
There we go.
He's there.
All right.
There you go.
I'm gonna be coming up pretty soon. Here, much better.
All right, I'll.
Where'd she go?
She's gone. I think she's, nope, I think she's coming back. Here she is.
I'm right here.
Okay.
All right, this is much better. I can see all your wonderful faces. Again, good evening. Thank you, Commissioner Gissler, for that wonderful introduction. He always does a really, really great job of setting me up. So I really, really appreciate his voice of confidence in my abilities. But as he said, I am Mona Lisa Watson. I am the Republican nominee for Kalamazoo County Clerk and Register. So I am on the ballot and ready to run and win to represent the entire county of Kalamazoo. Some of the items that I want to focus on as the next Kalamazoo County Clerk is really ensuring that we have someone who can carry on in the tradition of County Clerk Timothy Snow and ensuring that our county office is ran as neutrally as possible. Unfortunately, my opponent wants to make Democrat history in in order to to kind of take over the Kalamazoo County Clerk's office. And it really should not be an office that is ran in a partisan way. Shortly, I just wanted to share with you that I have over twenty years of multi-sector leadership experience, which includes personnel management, budget management, as well as working in the areas of compliance and audits. So I do believe that my skill set is of such where I will definitely be able to lend some expertise, especially in light of the Clerk's office, really trying to grow into itself even more. I think there are a lot of opportunities that are available. I believe that we want to start enhancing the customer service experience through the County Clerk's office. We want to make sure our vital records are not only accessible, but they're accurate and affordable. One of the things I also want to focus on is looking at our County Clerk hours. So making sure that they're flexible and they're ready to serve the people. We all have various things going on in our lives. A lot of us have full-time jobs or we have various things, activities going on throughout the day. And wouldn't it be nice to have a County Clerk's office that offers hours over the lunchtime, for example, to be able to accommodate those working folks who only have a very small amount of time to access their records and do business with the County Clerk's office? One of the other things that I really plan on doing is bringing back better the County Clerk programs that were impacted by the COVID nineteen crisis. We had a lot of County Clerk off programs that had to be suspended due to COVID nineteen. So some of those services include making sure that we're able to get those CPL license applications processed in a timely manner. Another is also making sure that our partners get the information that they need. For example, our Veterans Relief Fund partners with the County Clerk's Office to receive the death certificates of our vets so that they can process the relief funds so that those funds can get to the veterans' families in a timely manner. Unfortunately, that was impacted by COVID nineteen. So we have a lot of programs that come out of the County Clerk's Office that we want to definitely make sure that we're bringing back better under new leadership. And those are two of the programs that I especially want to focus on. In closing, one of the more important things that I want you all to be aware of, if you're not already, is that this year is a census year, which means that next year, using the data from the Census twenty twenty, the County Clerk along with four other individuals will be redrawing our district lines in our county. And so to to make sure that your district, the Vicksburg District, is adequately and fairly represented, I believe that I am going to be the best person for that. Again, I want to carry on in the tradition of Clerk Snow and making sure that you do not have to worry about not having fair representation because I'm going to be around the table to make sure that 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 happens. And so again, thank you for your time and attention. If we do have any time for questions, I would be more than happy to take them. If not, feel free to visit my website at www.mona lisa watson dot com. My phone number, and I do take personal calls and questions, is two six nine seven six zero seven nine one seven. And I already spoke with a potential constituent today, and he was surprised when I answered the phone. And so I I am available to take calls and questions at any time as well. Thank you again for your time and attention.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mona Lisa. Also, as a public official, we have Drew Johnson, I think, on the line from South County Community Services. Drew, are you there?
Yes, I am. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Cool. Yeah, I just kind of wanted to give a bit of a breakdown, give you kind of an update about what we've been doing at South County. We are, we're kind of, we're practicing social distancing guidelines. We're trying to keep one staff in the building at all times and make sure that we're available to people as they come in. But we are kind of trying to maintain a physical presence while trying to be as safe as possible. So it's resulted in a few changes. We're not able to have a walk-through pantry anymore, but we are still providing food. We're still providing utility assistance. We're still providing transportation, both through our metro van and through gas vouchers and all the ways that we have in the past. I also want to let you all know, though, that we have hired a senior outreach coordinator, Sarah Cagney. She comes in with about fifteen years of experience working at senior services and working with the area agency on aging. So we're really excited about what she's going to be able to bring to us. So kind of over the next couple of months, we're going to be working on restarting our Safe at Home program, which is the program that we we use to kind of, to help seniors with low cost and high return on investment home repairs. We're also going to be working on some care calls for seniors, making sure that everybody's kind of able to be seen and people that she's, she has talked to. For example, she's had, I think she's done about two hundred outreach calls to seniors in the area. A lot of them required follow-up calls, so they're being connected with volunteers as part of this new care call program. So if you guys know anybody that are in need, you remember, we do, we help with families, we help with seniors, people with disabilities. We also have a special veterans fund. We have a special COVID fund that we're using for people who are affected directly by COVID. So we've kind of got a lot of different services that we're offering, and we want to make sure that everybody knows that we're still available. We had kind of a decrease during, you know, the beginning of the pandemic as people, you know, there, people had stimulus checks. But a big part of it was that people didn't really realize that we were open. So we're starting to see a sort of a ramp up, and we're really expecting that to increase again. We're we're above our our levels for last year right now, and we're expecting to see that continue to increase. But if you know anybody, then please send them our way. Even if we can't solve their problem directly, we can almost always find the right people for them and refer them in the right way and and kind of help help with that connection, so.
Yep. Well, Drew, thank you for introducing yourself to the village council and to the citizens that are online. Your services are much appreciated.
Yeah, thank you. Feel free to give me a call if anybody's got any questions or just kind of in general, if you want to know what's available in the area.
Okay, thank you again. I'm looking at the agenda. This is citizens' time for any agenda item. If there's any citizen online now, if you'd raise your hand and on your keypad so Mr. Mallory can see it, he'll alert us to the fact that you'd like to address us on an agenda item. There'd be other time for non-agenda items. Is there anything, Jim?
I don't see anyone hand raised if you want me to ask.
Go ahead and ask a certain citizen that wants to address the council on an agenda item. Trying not to miss.
Well, I I see Ryan Wagner. So Ryan, if you want to put your hand up, if you want, if you want to speak on an agenda item. He does not. Mr. Olson, do you want to speak on an agenda item?
Yes, sir, just real quick. We've applied for our permit to run the Vicksburg Vintage Market for next year. The dates have been included, and that's on the packet tonight. Our, we feel the show has been very successful, and we just want to make it grow and become a bigger draw for Vicksburg. So I want to thank the council for considering that.
Good.
Thank you, Danny. Mr. or Mrs. Callan, if if you're on and want to speak, I'm pretty confident you, and there's someone titled Allison, be happy to, if you have a comment on an agenda item.
It would be Mrs. Callan, and no, I'm good. Thank you, Jim.
Yeah, thank you. And I've attempted communication with Allison a couple of times, Mr. Adams, so I will conclude that there's no comments there.
All right, that brings us to our consent agenda for this meeting, which includes minutes of our September twenty first. A warrant report for eighty-two thousand five ninety-three. An event that Danny talked to us about for the vintage market. And there's been correspondence with John Steers. I entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the general consent agenda as presented.
Is there support? Is there support? That was Rick Holmes.
Trustee Keller, support.
Thank you. Trustee Holmes that has made the motion with trustee Keller in support. Roll call vote will be trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Reaster.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
Trustee Keller.
Yes.
Trustee Bailey. President Pro Temp Frisbee.
Yes.
And President Adams.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, that brings us to the village council action items. Jim, would you walk us through those?
Yeah, so one thing, at the last council meeting, we did have unanimous support to go ahead and file our social district plan with the state of Michigan. As part of that, they want a formal resolution versus a roll call vote. So we've provided the council with a resolution that follows the legislation. Mr. Andrew Horn wrote it. I'd be happy to answer any specific questions. If if a council member has them on the resolution, provided it's resolution one zero zero five two zero two zero dash zero one, approving the creation of a village of Vicksburg Social District for consideration by the Michigan Liquor Control Commission.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for approval of that resolution.
Frisbee, I'll make a motion. We approve the resolution.
Okay, is there support?
Trustee Keller, support.
Okay, any discussion on this? Any council member have questions or concerns?
Trustee Holmes. Mr. Mallory, just one question. Just curious from the last council meeting a couple of weeks ago, if you've heard from any citizens or any business owners, just regarding the discussion that we had. And I'm just, just looking to see if if anything has happened the last two weeks from our last discussion about this.
I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Lee here in a second, as he's kind of been the point person for this. I have had two business owners speak favorably and appreciative of the action. But I certainly want to let Mr. Lee have the opportunity as he was a point person.
I've had no additional comment.
Not that I expected it, I just thought it's been a couple of weeks since we talked about this. And before we have a final vote, I just wanted to have one last check to see if there's anybody that did have any additional comments before the council voted on it.
Yeah, and I think it might be one, one of the business owners is one with a liquor license, and the other business owner doesn't have a liquor license, and both spoke favorably as a positive economic incentive, so.
Okay. No further questions by council? We're ready for roll call.
Okay, roll call on resolution ones. One zero zero five two zero two zero dash zero one would be trustee Merrill.
Yes.
Trustee Reaster.
Yeah.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Keller.
Yes.
Trustee Bailey. President Pro Temp Frisbee.
Yes.
President Adams.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
I I have one question. This is Frisbee.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. The act that was put into place by the governor, now that expires in twenty twenty-four. Is that, is that the case?
Yeah, but a little bit different. It was legislation that the Senate and House of the State of Michigan collaborated on, and the governor signed the legislation. So it's acted into law with a, with yes, it expires at the time you said.
There would have to be a continuing resolution to go further past twenty twenty-four with or without our approval, right, from the state?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I think we're ready for the next item.
The the next item, sir, is a resolution. The council back on June fifteenth provided unanimous support for the village manager to submit a grant to the EDA of the federal government under cares. Part of that process is as well, they would like a resolution, which we've provided to the council for their review. It's resolution one zero zero five two zero two zero dash two. And I'd be happy to answer any questions on the resolution. It's it's a procedure. If the council have have questions on that.
Okay. My only comment, Jim, is on my agenda, the both resolutions had the same number. I assume that's got corrected.
Yes.
Did, thank you. I'd entertain a motion for approval of saying then.
I move that we authorize the village of Vicksburg to apply for an Economic Development Administrative Grant, resolution one zero zero five two zero two zero dash.
Okay, is there support?
Frisbee.
Okay, it's been moved and supported, the resolution. Is there any further discussion by council, questions or concerns? Hearing none, we're ready for roll call, Mr. Mallory.
Okay, roll call will be trustee Bailey.
Yes.
Trustee Keller.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
Trustee Reaster.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
President Pro Temp Frisbee.
Yes.
President Adams.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We have updates then, Jim, when you're ready?
Two updates, as as we told the council, we'll give a more thorough update at the next council meeting, reference the financials over the first quarter of the village of Vicksburg that was part of our budget approval process. But we do have update on state shared revenue. The state did get a budget set that began October first. The total amount of state shared revenue anticipated for the village of Vicksburg is two hundred and eighty-nine thousand three hundred and twenty-four dollars. That is about thirty, it's three thousand and eighty-four dollars less than last year, which is a negative one point one percent reduction. The average reduction in Kalamazoo County was at one point three percent for for entities within the county. So on our budget prep, if you remember, and we we budgeted at about a hundred and sixty-five thousand and to, wanted to anticipate about a forty percent reduction, and we were back in the May-June on knowing time period. We did make a budget amendment in a positive direction to two hundred and five thousand dollars at the last council meeting. So we will update. We usually make amendments in the upward position once the money is in the bank. So that is what we'll wait to do as we go through, but wanted to let the council know and community that our elected officials at the state level work together and have an agreed upon budget. So we have some numbers that that we're working with and moving forward.
All good news.
Yes, it's nice to have positive news.
Yeah, yes. Here, no other questions. The other is an update. We certainly have had inquiries, and I'm sure council members have had inquiries, reference to the street closing signs that were put alongside the road out on Twenty Second Street. They're just there in position for when that infrastructure project is initiated. We anticipate in the next two weeks that there will be approximately three-week time period that Twenty Second Street becomes. impassable due to the depths that that infrastructure project is at about 20 feet deep. The schools, we've kept them in constant communication, but as we get closer and have specific information and, and dates, we will certainly put that out through all of our communication avenues. There was, I did want to let people know that the neighborhoods in, in no manner will be part of a detour route. Evan. I, I can't say that everyone will, will honor that, but it, it will not be part of a published detour route or in that as we get closer. But I wanted to let the council members know just due to the social media talk on the topic that the signs were dropped off probably three weeks in advance of actually being needed. So be happy to answer any questions about, about the project or that specifically.
Okay. Does that end your reports, Mr. Mallory?
The only thing that, that I would add kind of in the spirit of, of when positions come open for, for subunit government boards. Here, hopefully, I, I was out of the office at the end of last week and still am, but my goal is by Wednesday to post a part-time accounts payable position in Village Hall. It'll be a 20 to 24 hour position. We do want someone with accounts payable experience and we'll have a job description and posting that goes up on different job bulletin boards. But prior to it going up, I'll distribute it to the council members as well as, as our members of subunit government boards, just in case they know anyone. We fully anticipate that we will conduct interviews and we'll have a member of the human resource committee as part of that interview team as we proceed forward.
All right. That concludes your updates?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then we're ready for citizens' time on any non-agenda item. If there's any citizen out there on this call.
All right. I see, I see Mr. Gressler putting his hand up, so we'll get him first.
All right. Start back with John.
And I'm hitting the, so he'll have to hit the on mute, but he's working at it, I can see.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. I just wanted to give you a quick update on information that became available at the last Kalamazoo area transit survey meeting. Over the next year and a half or two, we've got three huge projects. Not, they're not all the same size, but we're going to be seeing three things happen that will shut down some of the key roads in the county. Or at least narrow them down. The first is a Gull Road Roundabout where G Avenue crosses Gull Road. That's going to take a while and it's going to cost just under five million dollars. There's a big, the big one is Portage intersection with I-94. And they'll be switching lanes back and forth and probably putting up the concrete barriers between lanes and that sort of thing. And that's going to take the better part of two full years. It'll start next spring. And it's going to cost around seventy, the estimate for engineering right now is seventy-seven million dollars.
What are they going to do there, John? What are they doing?
Well, they're going to, they're going to make it very much, if you're familiar with the interchange at Stadium Drive and 131 or with Westnidge and I-94, they're going to make them kind of like that. They've got a name for them, but I, I don't know what that name is.
But it's not a round, not a roundabout.
No, no, no. Oh, geez. You're right.
Okay, thank you.
You know, I, I feel, you know, I have mixed feelings to be generous about roundabouts. Anyway, the other one is a fairly inexpensive one, but it may save a lot of damage on some lives. It's in Van Buren County on I-94 and they are going to be going to some kind of dynamic signage. And they haven't decided how many dynamic signs are going to be going each direction. But it will let you know fog ahead, snow ahead, thirty-five miles an hour recommended. It won't have the enforcement of law. If you go past one of those signs that says thirty-five is recommended and you go sixty, you're on your own, but you won't get pulled over. They didn't even put a price tag as far as I remember on that. But it sounds like something that might be very good because the Van Buren County 25 miles between Mattawan and Waterville, that's exit 66 through exit 41 has more snow than any other interstate section in southwest Michigan. And if any of you have driven that frequently in the winter, you know, that's, that's the case. And you can be going along in dry pavement and sunshine. And in the next five miles, all of a sudden you're in a blizzard and there's a foot of ice or snow on the road. And, you know, all hell's breaking loose. So I think it'll be a good thing to have these signs up that will tell you what's going on. And they don't know exactly how many they're going to be or how they're going to be positioned. But most of them will be somewhere just past an interchange. So if you're entering I-94 at that point, you will not be, you know, you'll be unaware immediately of the fact that there's something up ahead that you should maybe be cautious about. That's it. That's the third project. Thank you.
Okay. Is there another citizen, Jim?
We'll go around again.
Miss Jenny's got her hand up.
And he's up. All right.
Danny Holmes.
Go ahead. Mrs. Holmes.
I just wanted to thank the DPDBO, DPW for their work with the plant transplant project and the help from the two council members, the Park and Rec Committee, volunteers from Lion Club NHS, the VHS teacher that helped relocate plants from Main Street to Clark Park. And I also wanted to thank whoever was responsible for the well timed rain that helped welcome the plants. And I also wanted to raise awareness about the Vicksburg Historical Society's fundraiser. It's a limited edition t-shirt and sweatshirt sale. There are links on various Facebook pages like the Vicksburg Historical Society's page. And if you rate this quickly, it's customing.com backslash fundraiser backslash Vicksburg one. And all proceeds do benefit Vicksburg Historical Society.
Good job, Jenny.
Thanks, Jenny.
All right. Anybody else, Jim?
Mr. Wagner?
Well, Jenny beat me to it. So thanks, Jenny. Going to talk about the fundraiser. And sorry, I didn't realize the Twenty Second Street was going to be an agenda topic. So do you mind if I jump to that real quick, Jim?
Sure.
Where exactly is the closure going to take place? It's going to be impassable on Twenty Second?
I believe it'll be closer to where the lift station is. So more by the condos by Trillium or the south end close to UV Avenue. Is that what comes into Boulevard there?
Okay.
There, there will be one lane open to get to all of the neighborhoods for entrance, exits, school bus routes and that. It just will be going into a neighborhood, coming back to Twenty Second Street and then back around probably to Portage.
All right, that's it for me. Thank you.
Anybody else, Jim?
I'll go around as they're on my screen. Ms. Callen, do you?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Olson. And that would be it. I think Mr. Olson's good. So I, that, I think, and as usual, Mr. Ritzmahl, stay on the call after. If you have questions.
All right. I got
one question.
Question for our village manager under president's time, if we're there.
Yeah, did someone, did I hear, did someone else ask a question?
Julie.
I just have a question. Sorry to jump in. People are asking me, is there going to be a Halloween walk around? And honestly, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, we, we, we put out in the newsletter with utility bills that the hours if individuals choose to participate in Halloween are 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And encourage families to make those decisions on that participation level, as well as if they choose to participate. It would be our hope that everyone would honor a social distancing preventative as well as wearing a mask. But, but we did list the hours, 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
Thank you.
Yep. And that was exactly my question because it was the most asked thing I got walking around town. Every place you go, they want to know, are you canceling Halloween or that? And it was a suggestion by one of the mothers who's in the medical industry that everybody just put their candy outside the door and have the kids on or just taking one. But that was a big one. And then my only other thing under president's time is Colin, I expected you to say something about my haircut. I went out and spent all this money. You've been giving me the S-H-I-P all week or month and.
I, I can't even tell, Bill. Come closer to the screen. Come closer to the screen so we can see you. All right, very good.
All right. Council members' time. Let's start with Gil because we got her on the screen.
No, I just think, I guess I'm a little concerned about the Halloween thing. I, I probably will not be giving out candy this year just because of the COVID and probably my age. And so I, I, I was hoping that we would cancel, but I certainly will. Hope all the kids will be safe and that people handing out candy will be safe.
Yeah. Okay. Mr. Frisbee, anything from you?
Yeah, I just wanted to take a minute to thank Jim Mallory and the staff for all the hard work they've done. You know, coming out and creating and going after some of these grant money. All the time that was spent on the USDA loans and everything they're doing, you know, well job, well done. I see Michelle's on the line. Thank you all both very much. And, you know, communicate that back with your team. We're really, really proud of what you've done for this community.
Yep.
Well, we all, the HR team discussed the need for a part-time clerk and we're a hundred and ten percent on board with going ahead and filling that role. Help take some of that burden off the two I just spoke about. And Denny and Karen Jameson, you know, good job on the village market. Ms. Holmes, Jenny and all the volunteers that moved those plants, what a cool effort. You know, saving all that, the, the infrastructure and the plants and the flowers and everything. So that was it. Thank you very much for all, everybody's support.
Yep. Good comments. Julie, do you have anything?
No, just the crisis about Halloween. That's it.
Okay. All right. All right. Mr. Holmes, anything for us?
Nothing except a question, Bill, and that is what is the exact address of that house that has candy out front? Up the evening of Halloween. I'm just asking for the kids.
Sure you are.
It's the corner of Seabee, McDonald Way and separate. Okay. Let's see. Carl Keller.
Not a whole lot, other than I appreciate the response on Halloween because I've been asked as well, but I'm still trying to figure out what kids are going to do the honor system of taking one piece of candy per house. I that never works. It never works.
All right.
You buy, you, you buy the Sweet Tarts and that, then they only take one, otherwise.
There you go.
There you go. Colin Bailey.
Jim, just a question for you. Curious to what our meetings are going to do here now that the governor's executive orders are in question.
Well, right now it's specific to the, to the meetings, both the Senate and House today initiated a process, bills in both branches of, of the legislature to allow to, to change the Opens Meeting Act to allow virtual meetings as we're holding. I've communicated and will be in the future that I, I think it's a very positive thing. So, so those bills were introduced today. It's anticipated that, that they will move through for a governor's signature pretty rapidly. Specific to this meeting, if anyone we did consult one of our attorneys and, and felt we are on sound legal ground to hold it tonight in the manner that we are based on their advice and recommendation. But I would anticipate prior. They also provided us the advice, it, it would be valid to hold the next one on the 19th, that they be in our attorney. But I'm anticipating you'll see that legislation signed by a governor prior, prior to October 19th.
I also wanted to commend you for putting your efforts forward to getting to this meeting. I know that you've had some family issues going on and.
I appreciate that.
Okay. Any council member that I've left out or has another thought? If not, meeting for October 5th stands adjourned.
All right, Jeff, and I'll hold on in case you have questions.
Everybody stay well.